Good afternoon, everyone. I think we're about two seconds after noon. So, good afternoon. Thank you for coming to the special Salina Board of Education meeting. Please join me in my pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still, it's still a good morning. Well, the purpose of the meeting today is to update everyone as best we can upon the... Yeah, we should do both first. Without the...
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mrs. Gingrich?
Here.
Mr. Huber?
Here.
Mr. Sell?
Here.
Mrs. Fordy?
Here.
Now, the purpose of the meeting is to try to dispense information as we know it, what's going on in the Salina School District. And with that, Dr. Schmiesing, would you care to go ahead?
That would be terrific. Thank you, Mr. Sell. Been busy couple days. I appreciate everyone's support as we try to move forward through this. It seems like every day we continue to get updates. Someone just shared recently that they do believe that the governor is making another announcement at 2:00 this afternoon. What that announcement is, we do not yet know. But after it comes out, if we need to make any adjustments to our current plans, we will also send that information out and try to continue to update the public. Jason joined us as part of the Mercer County Health District, joined us with the rest of the superintendent's meeting and making plans. We put together a statement with the Health Department and presented that out. Was it 20 minutes later, I think, the governor made an announcement? And then we had to re-change the plans and there were all types of questions. So then we put out another statement a little later that night. So then with some more updates, we also put up, put out a new statement again last night. We want to try to catch everybody up, let everybody know where we are right now. The one statement, Mercer County ESC School Districts and the Mercer County Health Districts remain committed to the health, well-being, and education of your children. From the letter from March 12th, I just want to go over a few of those highlights, let everyone know that yes, school will continue to be in session Monday, March 16. We do have the two-hour delay schedule that will be to help teachers continue to prepare. The administrators, the teachers, our OC folks, they've all been working hard to get things prepped for this three-week break. So, given that extra two hours, that will continue to get them ready. We will give the administrators a chance to share a couple comments about their buildings, how they're preparing, and how they hope to send the students away from the buildings Monday afternoon. Salina schools will be closed from Tuesday, March 17th through Friday, April the 3rd. So classes at this time are tentatively to resume April the 6th. That is a Monday. We are in compliance with the governor's directive to ensure student health and safety, and that that must take the priority at this time. So we will continue to provide the best, most accurate communication and up-to-date More recently, last evening, we waited until after the governor and the president both spoke, so we wouldn't send out information that would be contradicted again. So that's why our information didn't go out until it was around 5:30, I believe, that we sent that out. Tuesday, March 17th, Salina City Schools will begin operating utilizing the E-Day slash Blizzard Bag Days for our students to meet state education requirements. That will continue through April the 3rd at this point. K through 6 and 7 through 12, I think it's a good time right now. Before I go on, let's have the administrators speak a little bit about how plans are going in their school districts. Michelle, do you want to start off for K to 2?
Sure, I can talk about the primary school. So thank you, thank you to my wonderful staff and the entire Salina City School staff. They came in Friday morning, we started a meeting right away, they started working during their planned periods, they were working during their lunches, to come up with a plan for how we're going to handle this with kindergarten, first, and second graders, because as you can probably imagine, we just can't put things online for them. It's just not that easy. And much of what we do at school is teacher-directed, so it's very, very difficult for our little people to learn independently without the support of an adult. But they are coming up with some packets that we're going to be sending home. They're looking really hard at making them spiral review activities, so that the kids can hopefully, for the most part, do it independently, best that they can. And we are going to utilize our social media pages for putting out additional supports that families can use. It's been really neat to see over the last 48 hours, all of the educational sites that are now providing free online access to a lot of their online learning things. And as we find free ones, we will post those to our Facebook page and things, so that families can access those. I posted this morning a Scholastic one, and I think I posted something else, I don't remember what it was. But as we find those free ones, we will do that, and our teachers will be available. We'll be at school, the office will be open. I have to come there.
Speaking of some of those free resources, we have heard that some of the internet providers are also offering free services during this next three-week period. So if you're interested in that, you might want to check into your internet service providers to see if that's a possibility for you and your kiddos, if you don't have that service at this time in your house. Thank you, Michelle. Cory, how about elementary school?
Well, like Michelle, we worked very diligently yesterday. I'm awfully proud of my staff. We had a call to staff meeting yesterday morning, but we're visiting kind of established norms and concentration areas. We're primarily going to concentrate on the reading and mathematics and physical education portion. We feel that it's necessary that the kids get out a little bit and get off of electronics so much. Like Michelle too, I don't think it's feasible for our kids to completely go online. We're printing about 75% of our E-Day packets anyway, so we too will have all packets. With the end of the nine weeks, actually yesterday, we had a planned afternoon movie for the reward party for next week, Friday, so I moved that up to those Fridays, so those that earned that could have that, and also allow my teachers to have a little bit of time. So they worked really hard yesterday afternoon and got a great start. I know the end of completion of the two-hour delay, we're going to have all those packets ready. I will give my teachers the afternoon to kind of walk the kids through that, show them that I too will be establishing some drop-off and pickup times that gives them a sure that it works first, after agreement itself, with communication and what happens.
So to go along with that, we definitely encourage students to be in attendance Monday. That will help them get that head start for the next three weeks. Mr. Wenning?
I just appreciate my staff. They were wonderful on Friday. We had a meeting in the morning, and our primary goal is to see if we can get as much information in their hands as possible when they leave on Monday. And so with each teacher, we talked about what their plan was, and they've kind of submitted a daily, this is what I would like my students to do, so they have kind of a weekly goal or a daily kind of goal that's not too cumbersome for our students, so we're not overdoing them, you know? So we've kind of met and kind of established that. We're going to have a drop-off as well, so in the commentary, each teacher's going to have a table with a placard with their name, that if students need additional copies, they can come in and grab those things, and also drop them off on those tables as well. So we're going to start looking at that as well. Our musical, our sixth grade musical, our sixth grade students have been really working, working hard, and it's supposed to be on Thursday. So I kind of made a schedule this morning, I went to my office, and so I had a schedule set up for Monday morning, where it's 20 minutes each period, so they're going to stop at each teacher each period for 20 minutes. And the first two hours will be for teachers to work on their lizard bags, but then there will be a fifth grade musical, so the teachers will have another hour to work on lizard bags, and then a sixth grade musical, where the sixth grade will go, and they'll have another hour. So it looks like about three or so hours of teachers working on Monday to get things out into their hands, and if we can get stuff in their hands as much as possible on Monday, it'll be better for us. So that's kind of our direction right now. And I, once again, it's been crazy, but I appreciate all the work, so thank you.
Mr. Mike Sell, the middle school?
Yep, we are in a little better situation than some of these guys, since we are one-to-one with the Chromebook, so we're looking at a primarily web-based deal for the next couple weeks. We are, we started Friday trying to identify those students who do not have access to internet. Obviously, there's a lot of different options out there, public library, different restaurants, things like that. I've talked to Montfort a little bit about McDonald's, and trying to give students those options. But identifying those students who don't have internet access, trying to get paper copies, hard copies into their hands before the end of the day on Monday has been a big thing. Fortunately, our staff is fantastic with everything that we've been going on with. And E-Day number three, for most of the people I've talked to, is already ready to go, thinking web-based, you can roll out with number three and then focus on the others as we go. So yeah, we're in a little bit better situation since we are one-to-one with the Chromebook, so we're prepared for much further.
Thank you. Mrs. Kramer, Mr. Metz at the high school?
Um, we've got a little different situation, but again, I want to thank the staff. We've done a lot of collaborative work over the last couple weeks, so they're working well together as far as coming up with the plan. One of the big things that made a key point at a staff meeting yesterday was our intent is not to overwhelm students, so it's not an assignment per period, per day, you know, that's due in two days and boom, off we go again. We understand that, again, we can only digest instruction online, you know, at a certain pace. So we talked to classes, you know, differentiate your instructions based on your students. So we have some classes that are already set up, we have some wood classrooms that are already established with online learning. If your classroom lends itself to that. We have a lot of hands-on type activities, our art classes, our music classes, our wood tech classes. You know, we said don't create busy work, it's not something that, you know, don't create assignments that really wouldn't exist just because your subject doesn't lend itself to that. So I think that kind of answers quite a few questions, and then your gears start to turn as to how we're going to start presenting this stuff back to our students. We will take a look at technology, I think we need to survey our students to see who's going to need what in order to move forward. You know, our online learners, they're already, you know, set up, they've got their curriculum, so we have several students that do that sort of learning already. Touch base, walked through several classrooms and talked to our kids and said, what are your concerns right now? We're attacking this from an adult perspective, but what questions do you have? I think it was spring sports, prom, graduation, and I think one kid asked about even course testing, so it was a little concerned about that. So we answered what we could, but again, the information just kept rolling in all day, so I think sports kind of changed. And up until last night, I think we got a new directive on that one as well. So we'll make subject, by subject worth available in the lobby in front of the high school, so if kids need to pick up information, teachers have started to put together packets and, you know, just by subject matter, they can go and pick up, find their teacher's names and get their assignment. So we'll have that available, print off for the kids that don't have print capability or possibly internet. We've got some information, you know, on the musical, right now, a lot of stuff is being postponed and delayed, but you know, as far as we know, these things are still on. I know the ACT test has been canceled, we had a county-wide mock crash that was, Salina's turned to host this year, so all the actors and performers were coming out of our juniors and seniors, and that we're going to be in attendance, so Bonnie Eagle came by yesterday and told us that, you know, as difficult as what it was, they're going to pull the plug on that for this year. But everything else seems to be, you know, kind of, I said it might be a first year for a parking lot prom, but you know, we'll do what we need to do to make it work, so do our best.
Very good. Mr. Tracy Diameyer, our special education supervisors here with us as well. Tracy, if you want to provide some updates, I know we will continue the testing and such.
Right, right. Good afternoon, everybody, and I would like to thank my department also, they've worked really hard and, you know, trying to do what's best for our students. Our department is kind of unique, that we do have timelines that we have to adhere to as best as we can as far as students who are in any testing process or writing our IEPs and things like that. And I have received guidance from our lawyer, where they do want us to adhere to those timelines as best we can, but have those meetings, our IEP meetings in particular, remotely. So our plan is, you know, to gather our school staff with our IEP team here and have phone conferences with our parents and continue with those meetings as planned. Our school sites, Fred and Andre, have worked really hard, and we're going to still try to adhere to all those timelines as far as testing of our students, and we may be calling students in one at a time for some testing sessions, if parents are comfortable with that, so that those, that process does not get delayed and students get services. Our teachers have been directed, again, not to overwhelm our students and make our lessons for our students really directed towards our IEP goals, so they continue to progress on those goals and objectives, and not overwhelm our families also. So that's kind of where we are right now in the special education.
We are aware with these three weeks being away that that is infringing upon the testing window that the state has set out there for us. Our testing director here is also our curriculum director in the district, Von Ray, and I know we're going to continue to pass out information. Phil's already shared, the ACT's been canceled. Are there any other updates that you'd like to share at this point?
I think we're halfway done with our gift to testing, we have to get that done in the primary building, but we'll look at that back on track here. We haven't heard any updates as far as expanding any of the testing windows yet, but as soon as that's available, we will pass that along. It's great to hear that all of our staff is being flexible and working together, and it's by planning and sitting in with these folks, it sounds like we have the right curriculum plan in place for our students for the next couple of weeks to meet their needs, but we're always open to any sort of feedback, and we're always wanting to make some adjustments.
Thank you.
Dr. Penn, just briefly, if it's okay. I would also like to reiterate, from the Board of Education's perspective, we've been communicating, and we are very pleased to hear that we knew that you would have a plan to go, but when we heard this news, you know, obviously, we're in uncharted waters as well, never been through this before, so it's going to take us a while to adjust, and that's one of the reasons that Jason Mencho first here. I was going to introduce him, did you have something else?
No, that's the price I was, I do have more to cover yet after Jason, but that's the place we were going next, Jason. Yes, please introduce him, Bill.
And also, I know as a Board of Education, we probably have questions that we could pose to Jason or to Dr. Penn as well, so at any time that anybody wants to hop in here, feel free. Jason Mencho?
Thank you. I'd like to first start by saying, you, the administrators and your staffs and everybody, I think you're all to be commended for kind of rolling with the punches, and you know, the situation has evolved very rapidly. When we met with the superintendent's, was that Thursday, whatever day that was, it was before this whole, before the closure and before a lot of these major limitations were handed down from the state, and we knew there was a possibility that those things could be coming, and I think we've all got our own opinions on, you know, how effective or how necessary those things are. And what I've seen is people setting those thoughts aside, coming together, and taking the situation seriously, planning accordingly, I think you're all to be commended for that. I'd also like to follow suit of all the administrators here, and just acknowledge that I'm proud of my staff at the Health Department as well, and how they've come together this week. We've been doing some things behind the scenes really for about a week and a half to try to maintain our level of preparedness, and a lot of what took our time up this week was trying to get good, accurate information delivered to the public on what's happening, and trying to keep the situation in perspective. And that's a little bit of what I wanted to share with you today, just my version of update. I think probably everybody at the table has seen the joint letter that went out from the superintendents in the Health District, I'm not sure how many people in the audience have seen that. It carried our same message, that the Health Department's been trying to push out since this thing started in terms of precautions that people can take to protect themselves, you know, avoiding close contact, frequent hand washing, hand sanitizer when you can't wash your hands, stay home if you're sick, avoid people who are sick, and all of those things that we really try to push, you know, all the time, especially during flu season. The thing that we were putting out early on, again, like I said, to try to keep the situation in perspective and to try not to encourage panic or be blowing the situation out of proportion with regard to COVID-19 or the coronavirus, was just to keep in mind the comparison between the impact that we've seen so far from the coronavirus and the flu. Right now, CDC is reporting 41 deaths nationwide from this COVID-19 disease, and I believe they're also reporting something in the neighborhood of 20,000 deaths nationwide from the flu since the flu season started back in the fall. So early on, we wanted to kind of put that out there to try to keep people calm about this, and look, the sky's not falling, and it's not reason to fear for your life or anything like that. There are a couple differences, though, that should be acknowledged. One of those is this new novel virus is somewhat unpredictable, we're still not completely sure how it's going to spread. We do have more information than we did a few weeks ago, because we can see what happened in China and Italy and other places around the globe. The other difference is there is no vaccine, I believe that's under development, we're probably 18 months out from having a vaccine, if this thing continues to grow to where that's going to be necessary. So those are a couple reasons to take it seriously, although we still encourage people not to, you know, let fear rule and blow things out of proportion. I also want to talk a little bit about kind of the reasoning behind the interventions that are being put in place right now, and I know you're all probably paying attention to the situation, so if I'm telling you some things you already know, just please know I'm not trying to insult your intelligence, but we're trying to get a consistent message out there and put a little bit of method to what seems like madness coming down from the state and even federal level. These current major interventions that have been put in place, limitation on mass gatherings, the school closure that's coming up, and the nursing home visitation restrictions, those are aimed at what we call containment, so those are aimed at really trying to slow down the spread of the disease into and throughout our community. That is something that is somewhat effective early on in the life cycle, I guess, of this type of an outbreak, and in the big picture, that's not necessarily designed to really limit the number of people that are affected, but rather to spread those effects out over a longer period of time. I didn't bring any visuals or anything with me, I didn't figure, but PowerPoint up on the screen, but some of you who've been watching may have seen the graphic used over the last few days with the two different disease curves that shows, if you picture a regular graph, like a pie graph, the X-axis would represent number or time, and the Y-axis would represent number of people affected by the disease. And the graphic that's been put out there shows a really high, steep bell curve that represents how the virus has spread in places like China and Italy, where it came on fairly quick and they didn't react very quickly, I guess, and some of these interventions were not put into place. And there's a kind of dotted line across about halfway up on the Y-axis of that graph that's supposed to represent the capacity of the healthcare system. And the tall, steep curve that I mentioned that represents what's happened overseas shows that clearly exceeding the capacity of the healthcare system. And we heard a couple days ago that in Italy, there are too many critical, there are more critical cases than what they have ventilators and probably some other equipment supplies to accommodate treatment of those people. So there's another curve on this visual that shows more of a flattened, longer curve that probably has a pretty similar area underneath the curve, but it spreads the effects out over a period of time to try to keep it underneath, within the capacity of the healthcare system. So that is what the state is aiming at with these major interventions, largely unprecedented interventions that we're seeing right now. You know, again, there's a, people can have their own conversations about cost versus benefit, all of those things, and we all probably wrestle with that even we do in the public health field here at the local level. But the main message here is that these measures should have some effectiveness in accomplishing that goal. Eventually, the spread is probably going to become, you know, widespread enough that we're going to shift from containment to more of a mitigation approach. So at that point, a lot of these major interventions that are affecting lots of people, such as canceling sporting events, school, other things like that, the limitation on mass gatherings are probably going to go away, and then it's going to be more focused on managing the risk of people who are especially vulnerable. So maybe you'll still see the nursing home restrictions, and certainly people who are symptomatic will be encouraged to stay home and avoid contact with others, and people who are vulnerable will be encouraged to avoid large gatherings of people, but those gatherings might still be able to go on. So this is probably going to be a temporary phase, the governor even referenced that in his press conference yesterday. I don't think anybody can say what that timeframe's going to be, you guys know the situation is changing daily. One thing that was mentioned yesterday in the press conference is that they weren't making a move to order closure of daycare facilities yet, but the governor urged parents to be considering alternatives. If the pattern of events from this week says anything, that could mean there's an announcement coming today, that daycares are going to be closed. We don't know that. There is a press conference at 10:00, I think Dr. Schmiesing alluded to that. If anybody wants to watch that, it'll be broadcast live on ohiochannel.org, and you can get the latest developments there.
You hear that press conference is at 2:00? 2:00 today?
Yeah, 2:00.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Jason. We will certainly be open for questions here, I wanted to share a couple more items. Breakfast and lunch will be provided for free at Salina High School and also at Salina Intermediate School. Breakfast can be picked up from 8:00 to 9:00 at both of those schools. Lunch can be picked up between 11:30 and 12:30 at both of those schools. That is open to all children under the age of 18, and yes, the children should be present to pick those up, so we know that those are being accounted for. Our cafeteria supervisor, Deb Schroyer, did complete the waiver yesterday, that was out there yesterday, so that we will receive funds to continue to provide those food services. You know, the OC folks have been great going forth and looking to see how they could help communicate with Carol last night, they're looking and offering their services as well if it comes. Some of the other school districts have talked about using their transportation staff to transport food out from the school to the kids, so we will see if it will work. At this point, the waiver for us that we signed up for didn't cover that. Again, we are, over 40% of our students are on free and reduced lunches, but now that we're talking about all students, maybe it works out to have a satellite site that we're dropping off at, per se, Monizuma or out to Wabash area, to try to work with those families as well, to keep those kids all well-fed. The Ohio High School Athletic Association did share yesterday that all sports practices and contests are canceled, and that goes until April the 6th. So I know Jeff Fortkamp, our athletic director, was already receiving quite a bit of cancellations from other schools. I want to put out there as well, we've been cooperating with and communicating with OEA, our CEA members, appreciate all the hard work. We are certainly blessed here, I could not ask anywhere for a better administrative team, so thank you all for your extra effort, the time you put in here. Thank you, I don't want to forget anybody, but at this time, if we could open it up, anybody have questions, we will try to address those the best we can, and realize after 2:00, we might have different answers. Dr. Penn, I do have just a couple of thoughts, Cory and Michelle especially. You guys know your parents, do you think you could reach out to some of those parents to kind of organize their own little kind of group study for those kids who do not have that parental support at home?
at home? We know you're going to have some little ones out there who are going to be trying to slog their way through a blizzard bag and not have, you know, I, just a thought, I don't know, you know, but it seems to me that this community has always been very good about stepping up, and that might be an area where, you know, somebody's willing to go pick up, you know, a couple of kids and spend the two or three hours with them, however long it takes, you know, to work with them.
Yeah, that's definitely a possibility. We know that we do have a wonderful community, and even, you know, on the Facebook page that we put out about the breakfast and the lunches, we had parents already saying, "Well, I'll pick up lunches and take up your kids," and, you know, so we know that that support, that community support is up there. So, it's definitely something we can look into and.
Just a. Dr. Ken, I would like to see, I know we've done extremely well on social media in terms of, I think I've seen everything on Twitter and Facebook. Have we given any thought to using One Call also to push it directly to, I don't know what our sign-up rate is in terms of how many parents have the One Call, but that might be another avenue to get information out to people directly into their hands if they're not Facebook.
Right. We have sent three One Call messages over the last two days. What do we have, maybe 6,000 accounts, contacts do that?
If the parents have the opportunity to opt out, and once they opt out, I mean, it goes pools from the student services, but every parent can opt out, so, and we don't know that.
And, but I guess, you know, yeah, and I know we have gotten those messages, but it's been geared towards, you know, okay, school is canceled effective Tuesday, we'll be on a two-hour delay Monday. I'm talking about some of this other stuff, just to be able to communicate. Another avenue, I guess, is what I'm, the more, the more communication we have, the less panic.
Yep.
The less uncertainty there will be. And I guess I'm just looking at it from that standpoint, the more we can get it out there, I think, you know, the more people have a chance to kind of rally around this, look, let's, you know, nobody likes this, nobody's happy about this, but it's something that we've got to do and we've got to live through, and we'll do that.
Right.
And we'll do that as a community and then come out the other side.
Yes, yes.
I guess, I'm a little concerned about the Whole Foods.
Can you speak up?
I'm concerned about the Whole Foods thing, you know, saying the kids need to come in. Well, if it involves our little kids especially, they're not going to be able to come in necessarily if a parent's working and get their food. So, I think we need to really come up with a plan to try and reach out to especially the ones that we know don't get that food at home and try and get that food to them. I mean, this is going to be huge, three weeks, and if they're counting on those meals at school, they're going to need something. So, I guess, is there a way we can, you know, make sure, if there's a specific list of kids that we know, maybe a parent can go get it for them, or, I mean, I know we've got plenty of people that are willing to help and deliver. I guess I think we really need to concentrate on that. I'm worried about these kids.
Real quick, Renee, in conjunction with that, I was thinking the same thing. Could we use a student ID number? I mean, I'm picking up food for, the numbers are to identify the kids, and we can just check them off because the kid's six years old.
Well, but there are other districts delivering, correct?
Correct.
There are some that are.
Okay.
We are not because of, we do not solve files for that waiver.
We are booking to get that changed, though, as well.
I guess I would say, but, but that's financial, right? That's to reimburse us, or that's.
Correct.
To allow us to go do that.
Both to reimburse and to provide the food that we make and distribute.
Okay. If it was just money, I would say, damn, the torpedoes will speed ahead, but, but, okay.
So, we had talked earlier that we had wanted to provide tutoring services, we wanted to be available during school hours, and then we were told, we thought by Mike DeWine, that the students are not to be permitted back in the building. So, we've already, that's why we were throwing around the idea of how can we provide online tutoring? How can we, how can they come to get their meals? How can they, so, the tutoring end, and then we wanted to say, well, go to the library. Well, they're going to close the libraries. Go to, go to the churches. Well, they're probably going to close the churches too. So, any sort of extra tutoring, any sort of extra availability to try to get the kids the meals that they need, every idea we've come up with has been scratched. So, again, we're all kind of at a loss here.
Well, but we're back to organizing at the grassroots level. And that's where we, as a district, have to reach out to parents and say, you know, and parents are already coming out of the woodwork and saying, hey, look, I'm willing to help, however. Well, it may be time to mobilize them. And, and, you know, if, if I've got to round up a group of my son's buddies every night at 6:00 after I'm home and we go over, God forbid, chemistry or something like that that I haven't dealt with in a long time, you know, I mean, I'm willing to do that. I'm sure there are tons of other people who are willing to do that.
And I kind of think about how we handled the tornado last spring as a community without the government here, for the most part. We came together, we helped each other a great deal. Mr. Metz?
We already have staff that's, they've asked about working some modified hours. So, you know, my husband works days, I work nights, you know, we can double up on childcare, that sort of thing. So, I mean, I think we can do food distribution in the evening, you know, after work hours as well. So, I think we've got plenty of staff for that.
Kind of touched on this, to go more into our communication aspect of, we do have, we can utilize final forms now to, to send out an email to every single parent, if need be, so we do that other avenue you're talking about that is an option as far as communication.
Could we establish a call center?
Yeah.
Dr. Ken? Because I think, I don't know that everybody has access to email and to other forms of communication, but almost everyone has a phone, which free, selflessly, so if they want to call and drop a question, and my kids aren't getting, that we can, not that we have to man it, but we can pick up questions and then call them back and address, if you're ever needed.
Well, I know the teachers and this staff well enough to know that they're going to go above and beyond what's necessary. And I would imagine that if the phones start ringing in those offices, teachers will probably step forward, call the parents back and say, let me walk you through this. I mean, I do believe that, I mean, even with the little kids, I bet they're all prepared that they're going to have phone calls and maybe emails just that they have to be responding to all day long during school those days.
Yeah, and the staff is, and they're, and they're very prepared, and they, they want to do that because we don't want to be away from our kids. I mean, this is like killing teachers. Because, you know, they want to be with their, their kids. I mean, the thought of being away from them for this long is heartbreaking. And so, they're very prepared and have been communicating with their parents since we got the notification. And they, they came to me on Friday and said, I'll go get those meals. I'll, you know, tell me where to go and we'll take them. You know, if we're going to be here anyway, send it out. So, I think, so I think that's, that's a, you know, a great thing. We have wonderful staff, yeah.
Hang on, I'm sorry.
The only, can I say one more name real quick? I wanted to, since we were talking about food, I wanted to give a shout out and a thank you to Call Food Cantry. They dropped off more food bags yesterday, extra ones, that we could send home with our kids last, yesterday with the kids. So, on top of their regular Friday food bag, they sent us a whole nother bag of peanut butter and some different things in it that we could send home. So, thank you Call Food Cantry and everybody that donates food to the backpack program.
But do they have toilet paper?
I don't know. I don't know.
I had a question that I've been asking multiple times from just people in the public that was more directed towards Ken, but sort of addresses that situation, is, and I thought about this too immediately, when Governor DeWine canceled school, is he really giving us a spring break where the kids and the teachers are off? Now, I know other school districts, the teachers don't report to school at all. And they did send home blizzard bags, but they're not what we're talking about as blizzard bags, they're like a reading a book over the break and taking a test on that set for multiple classes. Is there possibly some directive coming, maybe from DeWine stating that this will be a true spring break where there will be no required curriculum and those weeks will be cut from the school year?
As I had heard, DeWine is communicating with governors in our region. From what I had heard, Indiana has given all of their students four weeks off, as well as all the staff.
You mean?
Four weeks off, except.
I believe the staff had to come in for four days during that four weeks.
Sure.
The students had no work for four weeks.
Yeah.
And they didn't have to make it up at the end of the year. That would relieve a lot of stress if Ohio were to do that, but I understand we also have that concern about the students' learning progression.
My concern on what we're doing now is, I truly feel we have to be best teachers in the area, and without their directive to these kids every day, they're not going to get the same education they would be in school. So, personally, it'd be better off, I feel, if that did happen.
It's, there's a tweet from yesterday that he announced that after the final bell, it would be a spring break. He said, let me clarify, buildings will be closed, but I want learning to continue.
Yeah. I've got weird messaging me asking me to send things home.
Yeah.
They want things for the kids to do.
That's a long break for those kids.
Dr. Schmazing, would we be best served if we had a separate website to disseminate information just about this particular issue?
No, I think it's set up already at the high school that they have a separate Google spot for families to go to, and that was nice that we already had the blizzard bags, that the board approved the E-Day blizzard bags. We used two of those already, so, yes, we have been proactive in setting that up with the students and the families, yes.
Any questions?
I had another question pertaining to just the internet access issue. So, it is that we cannot have students, any students at all in the school? I was thinking if we could have availability to the cafeteria or something for some students who need the access.
Mr. Eber, we, we have been talking about in our building a lot, obviously, we're going to try to build websites if a lot of students don't have access to the internet. That's what we're trying to figure out in our limitations. So, you know, on a nice day, within this period of time, can we say, you know, students, more than welcome to come sit on the hill and utilize it, the internet access, you know, not coming in the building, but, because you can, I think it stretches out to the parking lot, so where you can, you still have internet access, so, you know, I don't know if that's an option. You know, we have plenty of ground, you know, that kids can sit and work on that kind of stuff, so that's, we're trying to, can we do that? Like, that's the other option. I don't know.
I don't know if we have certain rules and guidelines from the state yet of what they recommend.
Well, when we get to, like, the special education students, some of that we'll try to do remotely, but some of that as well, we're still questioning. I believe the ESC has shared that they would like to continue to provide services to those students who are supposed to get services. So, there are some requirements out there as far as providing some students with a service that's on their IUP, and if we're going to change that within 10 days, we have to have a meeting and notify them as well. So, as much as we can supply services, work and communicate with parents, we will continue to do that.
Phil and Renee, since the spring ACT has been canceled.
We finished up this last window, so we just had a whole huge batch of testing. They're still going to, so, we just had a whole bunch, there'll be some opportunities in the future.
So, do we know, I mean, like I said earlier, we're in uncharted waters, but as far as admissions into colleges and universities, we're not sure what we're doing here.
It's a trickle. And, you know, whatever the person above them decides, so we're waiting here from college to, they put stuff on their website, and until they get a directive, they're not going to make a state notice to what's going to go on with AP testing, ACTs, and the course.
But we did just get down with a whole huge group of the juniors.
Yeah.
They just finished up a couple weeks ago, and we just got down with some madeups, so, we just all know what the future, when it knows what's going to happen.
But ACT contacted Wendy Agerson, said that they are working to reschedule, so, I don't.
There's some APT dates, but it's just a mess coming up marginally.
Are the AP exams, are those set by us, or are those, those are set by?
Probably.
That's, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So, we're at their mercy.
But, I mean, there's college credit attached to that.
Another thought I had, some discussions also, if this does, and I know you said it's probably not going to, or might not, but if it does extend past the three weeks and further, I think we're going to have to consider, if we're going to say, no, no more e-bags or anything, then we'll just have to cut that into the school year. Just a thought on my end, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but like I said, I just don't, I'm not comfortable with my kids just doing e-bags for a month and a half without that education in the classroom, so, some further discussion if it comes to that.
Hopefully it won't.
Yeah.
I'd just like to clarify that I wasn't even necessarily referring to that three-week window.
Sure, yeah.
It is something that should be temporary, it would be really.
Everything's moving target rate.
Yeah, and something I saw in one of the orders, I think, or some of the guidance within the last couple of days, almost gave me the feel that they're, the state's doing this three-week thing, and they might even put the decision on the schools after that, too. I don't know, but that's something that maybe try to keep in the back of your mind. And I think it's, I think it's probably a lot easier for you folks that it came down from above you and you're just doing it rather than having to make that decision in front of everybody.
Well, except, of course, you said, there'll be no school for three weeks. You figure it out.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that's out going to happen, but something I would keep in mind.
Hey, what else?
Yeah, we have a question. We probably know the answer, but we need to get it back to our members. If we cannot find childcare for our kids, are we permitted to bring our children to school unless we're at work? We, we are in that situation. Like, my daycare right now sent out a survey. She says as of right now, she's not closing, but she's waiting for this 2:00 thing to happen. She put advice by the health department to keep as many kids home as possible. She actually invited me there yesterday to see if, so I know what they were doing with their teachers, and I said, no, we're recording every day, so, I know we got a question last night from several people. Daycares right now are open, but they're encouraging us to keep our kids not there. What is that a possibility? I'm just asking.
My initial response is give them windowx and paper towels and get them to work on your window.
Well, I have a cleaner home who would love it.
To be honest, I.
So, I'm just asking because we've got a lot.
I don't think there'd be a problem.
We are asking all staff to report on Tuesday. Following Tuesday, looking forward, we will show flexibility to staff. Yes, so, if it comes down to having students there, we understand that. If you are a custodian and you're having your child follow you into the boiler room, you know, for, for the extreme, I think we have to still use common sense that we're not going to endanger any of our kids and have them in situations like.
Even our classrooms, away from other kids.
I think we're, we're waiting on more answers and guidance from the state level, too.
I think a lot of people will be able to use maybe family members or grandparents or some, at least part of the time, too.
Grandparents are out of the question because they're at the high level and they're too precarious.
That'll be a problem.
And ones that I have here, I've said no to my sister and momma because they're on the higher risk, and I get that.
Completely understand.
Exactly.
Yeah, then you light that up a little fear, and then.
Well, yeah.
But, but again, you know, the teachers are a community within the community, and, you know, if you guys got together and somebody became the daycare on a rotating basis, you know, maybe that, look, this is all, this is the Wild West, folks, and, and everybody is just kind of making it up as we go along, doing the best, doing the best that, that we all can. So, you know, but I am, I am a huge fan of these, of community-based stuff because we have shown time and again that we're a great community and we'll figure it out, so.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. If there's anything else, if not.
Anybody needs a hit of hand sanitizer.
We just, this is, this is just a prop. It's called $75.
No, back to Joe. Back to Joe.
I just had two, two real quick things that I'd like to share. First one, I know a lot of questions coming in about DC. I did leave a message with Bob Rogers Travel Agency. I think they need to make sure, normally everything goes through, goes through your hand, so I'm just trying to get in touch with them to find out kind of the details of what's going on right now, the trip is on a schedule. However, if you look at what's going on in DC, Capitol's closed, certainly, so.
What's your date? What's your date of that date?
The last week, was it?
Last week.
Yeah, the last week in April, we'll be back, yeah, first, first of March there, or May.
May.
So, so DC, we're still working on that, and as of now, it is still a go. And the second thing, just kind of wanted to share with everyone, I did talk to Mark Esselstine last night. Nesselstein last night, just to touch base, you know, we've got a lot going on, so I just wanted to reassure him, you know, we're all still thinking in France, or she is having good in bad days, but she is, she's comfortable, so just wanted to share that.
Bill, you had some communication, as well as I've heard some things. Election Day is still going on because they have started early voting. They said that that was not something that they could discontinue. They do continue to encourage early voting. Absentee voting has passed now, you can no longer request an absentee ballot, but there is some time yet to vote early.
The Board of Elections called today, they needed hand sanitizer for the polls, they didn't have any, there's none available anywhere, and Mr. Metz provided this with hand sanitizer to give to the Board of Elections. That's the state we're in right now, so...
Wow.
Thank you all for attending. Feel free to call us, get ahold of us.
Thanks for being here.